Good morning, everybody. My smartphone just turned 10 o'clock on the dot. So this time I call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session meeting to order on this January 24th, 2023. Welcome to all invited guests and everybody's a special guest. It's good to see the room almost filled up and looking forward to some of the things we're celebrating today. Please turn off your mobile devices if we have a list from the marshal. Take a look at that. Thank you. And it's our tradition, we will open in a word of prayer. I'm going to ask our county attorney if he'll lead us in the prayer and the pledge to the flag. Stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, we come to you now, this board and this audience, staff, and we ask that you'd be in this room. We'd ask that you would give us direction for these five folks up here on how to make decisions, to give the staff direction on how to best implement those decisions. And Lord, we ask that you'd be with the public to make sure that what you lay on their hearts makes it to this board and this staff on the direction to take this county. Lord, we ask that you would be with all these people. Lord, there's so many firefighters in this room who risk their lives, who go out and get paid a wage in exchange for a willingness to put something incredibly beyond value for the lives of others. We'd ask that you'd be with them, protect them, and as they step into these buildings or step into these vehicles to help those who are unable to help themselves, we'd ask that you'd be with them, protect them and guide them and help them to know that you're alongside them as they do it. No matter what comes against them, you'll still continue to be with them. We lift this up to you in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic from which we stand, one nation, in thy God, and in thy will, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason, for getting it started off correctly. Minutes, January 10th, 2023 work session minutes. And the January 10th, 2023 board meeting minutes are available for your review located on the back table. Under announcements, celebrate this morning, Team Paulding, Steve Mapes and Chris Nazaroski represented Paulding County Fire Department in the World Police and Fire Games. And I love this video. I've already seen it.
Metro Atlanta Police and Fire Hockey Team started in 2000, and it was just a bunch of guys and women that worked in various fire departments and police departments around the city. And we had formed this hockey team in Atlanta with 60 people. And after all the firefighters and police officers were killed in the World Trade Center, we got together with FDNY and did a charity event, I think it was in April 2002, for their Widow and Children's Fund. And it was at Phillips Arena after a Thrashers game. There were 19,000 people in the stands, and I don't even know what year it happened, but we decided this was not just Atlanta people. This was public safety personnel from all over North America. So we renamed ourselves the North American Blue Police and Fire Hockey Team. The World Police and Fire Games are held every two years, moves around the world. They usually have about 15,000 athletes participating in 60 or 65 different sports. In July of 2022, we were in Rotterdam, the Netherlands for the World Police and Fire Games. We have played, I think, in 10 or 12 years worth of the games, literally, all over the world.
Between the Police and Fire Games and the other international games that we've gone to, we've been to Switzerland, Ireland, Czech Republic, China, and Rotterdam, Netherlands.
Just being overseas, meeting new people, hearing new languages, learning a little about the language, learning about their culture, and becoming friends with people from literally all over the world has really been my favorite part of it. It's easy to get involved. Just Google WPFG, stands for World Police Fire Games, and you can see all the information about the upcoming event in Winnipeg in 2023. Birmingham 2025 is out there. Information on registration, information on all the different sports are all out on the website.
I think that deserves a round of applause. Steve didn't even tell you he could skate backwards. Well, more from the fire department. I want to celebrate the Paulding County Fire and Rescue would like to recognize personnel for their actions on a house fire on December 18th, 2022, that resulted in saving the life of a 10-year-old child. And the fire chief's going to report, and anybody else that you want to bring forth?
We've got quite a few here this morning. If we had a fire, we'd be okay, I think. Well, thank you for allowing us to do this. We're very proud of all of our employees and everything they do every day. They go out and a lot of times they save an abundance of lives and just going about their day, but there's some of those calls that you just can't ignore. This was a very special incident where all of them came together with their teamwork, perseverance, all their training, communication, when seconds counted, and it resulted in saving the life of a 10-year-old. So we wanted to recognize them. We wanted to share that with you this morning and share this with the public and let them know what these guys did and just congratulate them and give them letters of commendations. So I'm going to let our Public Information Officer, Lieutenant Steve Mapes, which everybody just met, he's a better orator than I am, so we're going to let him come up and he's going to talk about this and we're going to recognize these.
So it seems like we were just here a few months ago recognizing heroic actions of another crew. So thank you to the commissioners and county staff and the guests that are here for letting us do this a second time in a few months. Do you know when firemen, police officers, anybody in public safety first takes the job, they don't do it to be recognized, they do it to save lives, they do it to help people. They gladly risk their lives when necessary. These guys go into untenable situations, like the one we'll talk about today, when other people are running out. And I can tell you, you'll see the body language when they come up, none of them really want to be praised for their actions, but as Chief said, there are certain calls where we need to do that, and this is one of them. So Sunday morning, a week before Christmas, in the wee hours of the morning, we were dispatched to a structure fire in Hyrum, 442 Crescent Wood Drive. Several callers, including somebody from the residence, reported heavy smoke and fire from the second story. Before the first units arrived, the caller from the house told dispatchers that there might be two children trapped. Within six minutes of dispatch, Rescue Two and Battalion One and Hyrum Police Officers arrived on the scene, and they encountered heavy smoke from the second-story windows and were met in the front yard by family frantic, saying that at least one child was trapped upstairs. So these guys immediately went into rescue mode. Within seconds, Engine One, Engine Three, Truck Two, Squad One, ALS Rescue 11, and a number of command officers arrived on the scene. So there were a lot of people there to do this job very, very quickly. And thankfully, moments after they arrived and entered the structure in search and rescue mode, they were able to locate a 10-year-old female who was unconscious on the second floor, rescued her, carried her down the stairs, out to ALS Rescue 11, who began rendering medical care, lifesaving medical care immediately. And to tell the little bit more of the story, Denise Dillon from Fox 5 did a really nice story and interviewed some of the neighbors, so I'd like to play that, and we'll come back and do the awards after that.
Firefighters rescued a little girl who was trapped in a burning home. The fire in Paulding County started very early in the morning on Sunday.
Fox 5's Denise Dillon tells us there were several people in the home at the time.
Investigators told me there were six people inside this town home, four of them children, ranging in age from six months to 19 years old.
It was very scary for the family, and they were crawling out the windows and just trying to get to safety.
Neighbors say they heard screams coming from this home on Crescent Wood Drive in Hyrum just before 1:00 a.m. Sunday. The second floor of the home was on fire.
And there was a lady standing on the ledge of the overhang and smoke coming out.
A young man escaped the fire by going through this window.
Somebody jumped out of the back bedroom window, onto the porch, and broke a leg.
When firefighters pulled up, the five family members who got out said there was still a 10-year-old girl inside. She was trapped on the second floor. Firefighters ran into the building, threw the smoke and flames to find her.
A fireman ran out, holding the little girl, and they put her in the ambulance and took her off.
Fire officials say she was unconscious but still breathing. She was airlifted to Children's Healthcare of Atlanta at Eggleston and then transferred to JMS Burn Center in Augusta. Neighbors are saying an extra prayer for her.
We're all just praying and hoping that if there's anything we can do, they will reach out to us as a community.
And praising the firefighters.
Thank God for those heroic firemen.
Fire officials say the 10-year-old girl is improving. As for how this fire started, the state fire marshal's office is trying to figure that out. In Paulding County, Denise Dillon, Fox 5 News.
Just an update, less than a week after she went to the burn center in Augusta, she was discharged home. She's thriving now, which is good news. She's still recovering, but had the crews that morning not worked together as a team and done what they did, she would not be alive today. So on behalf of the fire department, we're going to present each one of them with a commendation. It's one of our highest awards in the fire service, and I'm going to call them up in order of arrival on the scene. Rescue Two, Lieutenant Paul Gibson, and firefighter Turner Edwards. Truck Two, Captain Mike Lewis and FAO Blaine Thomason. Engine Three, Lieutenant Jason Postel and FAO Juan Rosado. Engine Two, FAO Ken Henderson and firefighter Ethan Orage. Quad One, Lieutenant Will Reiner, firefighter Corey Wesson, firefighter Andrew Contino, and firefighter Sam Mathis. Engine One, FAO Blake Maynor and firefighter Thomas McIntyre. ALS Rescue 11 firefighter paramedic Jack Cridell and firefighter Jonathan Lewis. Last but not least, on Battalion Two, Captain Brandon Maple.
Angela, before you finish taking pictures, I know there's some family members. I'd like to have them come up and get the picture also. They support us. They take care of us every day. Would you ladies come share this picture? on that pre-Christmas Eve. I can't tell you, I teared up. I've got three granddaughters that are 12 and two that are 11, and I can just picture them in that situation up in the bedroom. And I think we can all realize, you know, the great sacrifice that you make to go into buildings like that. And I know you don't want any credit for it, but as the chairman of the Board of Commissioners and speaking for all of us, we really applaud you, admire you, and are so very, very proud of you. So thank you for what you do. We have two bid awards. Item number two is to approve the purchase of a wheeled excavator to Yancey Brothers in the amount of $374,539 for the Department of Transportation. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Jones will let us know a little bit more about this one.
Morning.
Morning.
This purchase request is for a CAT M320 wheeled excavator. Bids were solicited for various vendors for this piece of equipment. The equipment is for the DOT Drainage Crew. Funding for the equipment was allotted as a capital purchase in the FY '23 budget. This particular CAT M320 was selected due to the versatility, capacity, and features. It'll be used to dig ditches, repair, replace culverts, clean up debris. We have concurrence from Fleet Maintenance on this purchase and requesting approval of the purchase of the wheels, wheeled excavator in the amount of $374,539 from Yancey Brothers.
And item number three is to authorize the chairman to sign the contract with North Georgia Amateur Association to provide officials for competitive recreation sports.
Good morning. This is a contract that comes up every three years. We do it, and then it has a couple of rollovers in there so that we don't have to revisit it every year. This is actually with the North Georgia Amateur Umpires Association, provides officials for all our competitive sports, youth and adults. In your backup, you probably have a breakdown, but it varies from age group and activity, from, you know, the youngest groups through the adult leagues that we have. It will all be based on the number of participants and the number of games that we have. So it could fluctuate, but what we do know is it's going to be over the $50,000 limit, which requires approval from you guys. This is a cost that's picked up by our participants. It has increased this time, which was expected, and unfortunately, that may mean some increases to our folks that are participating as well.
Any questions for Michael? How much does an umpire make? I'm going to retire pretty soon.
Well, it's also one of those life-threatening professions that you could have, and it's not worth what you're going to get paid for it. It's going to range depending on the age and the number of officials that are out there with you. Could be $15, it could be $30 per game. Yeah.
Virginia says we're used to the harassment.
We're used to life-threatening up here.
There you go.
And not, you know, getting paid much.
I'm sure that officials are getting harder to come by, actually, because of the way that they're treated when they're out there doing their job. And it's a difficult profession to undertake. Most of the time, it's a part-time job for everybody.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Concerning the fees for people, do we have a program for people with less means to be able to participate in sports?
We work with them internally as best we can. We don't normally have a scholarship program, if you will, for it. Sometimes we have people that step forward as sponsors that want to do this anonymously.
Great.
We've, I don't know if I should say this, I might get myself in trouble, but we have worked out some individual payment plans for folks that might have four or five kids. Sometimes we have folks that come to us that are grandparents, that have taken responsibility of raising grandchildren, and we work with everybody the best we can.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Michael. Reports from committees and departments. Mary Carol Sheffield, I was glad to have her, the county extension coordinator, and brought a right-hand lady with her this morning, going to give us an update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to pull up my presentation here. There we go. I'm excited to be with you here this morning, and I want to thank you all as a commission for the support that you give, the outreach that we provide in our county, and thank you for the opportunity to report on our highlights from the year 2022. I'd like to start out with the soil testing and diagnostics information. That's like our base level of service where people often get to know us. Our office processed 763 samples last year for water, soil, forages, insects, and plant diagnostics, and we use the results to make sound recommendations to homeowners and farmers and landscapers to help reduce the use of fertilizer and pesticides so that those things don't end up in our local waterways. We also provide quite a bit of programming related to soil and water conservation. And this year, we did programming for farmers and programming for landscapers and homeowners and youth. We provided lots of classes, including two series, the Journeyman Farmer Class for Small Fruit and Vegetable Production, and the Master Naturalist Series, where we helped Paulding citizens learn more about local soil and water conservation efforts and how they can be local stewards. We also provided the Northwest Georgia Turf Update, which is a professional update for landscapers, and we were able to award 43 CEUs for folks with pesticide applicators and help them maintain cutting-edge best practices for use of that license and to maintain their best business practices. We also work with the Tri-County Cattlemen's Association. We do that every year. I don't always talk about that, but that's fun. And we talked with them, we brought the Farm Service Agency to chat with them about programs, federal programs that are available to help them be better stewards on their farms. I'm always excited to tell you about Master Gardener programming. It was a big year for master gardeners. We had 33 certified master gardeners reporting 1,660 volunteer hours this year, and they were involved in 22 projects and outreach programs, including the initiation of a junior master gardener program, a scholarship program that awarded two scholarships for the first time this year, nine public gardening programs, and they were successfully able to secure funding for the installation of a first-of-its-kind children's sensory garden on our property over at the extension office. So that's something you can be proud of, that you're welcome to come by and visit, and there's lots of programming happening in there, so you're likely to see some children out there in the afternoons and during the summer. 4H always stays very busy. It's hard to fit everything on one slide. They have met every month with fifth graders in every Paulding schools in the county, and that amounts to 99 club meetings every month that they meet. In addition to that, we have 73 volunteers that lead programs for us in special interest groups, whether that's horse and pony or shooting sports, forestry judging, poultry judging, and all of our kids get to learn about leadership and citizenship and life skills that they'll be able to use forever. They're supported in that by caring and talented adult leaders that were very happy and excited, come and volunteer with us. Our 4Hers had some remarkable accomplishments this year. We had our second annual county project achievement, which is a public speaking contest for fifth and sixth graders, and we had 62 students come and do a speech for us. And of those, 45 of them went to the district contest and gave their speech and competed against 4Hers from other counties. So that was exciting. We had one senior 4Her place first at Northwest District in his project area, Performing Arts, and he went on to compete at the State 4H Congress in Atlanta over the summer. And we had one Paulding County 4H alum, Reed College student, who was one of our 4Hers, who was selected as a 4H camp counselor at Rocky Eagle, which if you know about 4H camp counselors, they are rock stars. That's a pretty hard gig to get. We're real proud of that. And we had 95 4Hers from fifth through 12th grade attend camp this year. All that work resulted in some recognitions for some of our staff members, and I wanted to share that with you today. Kristin Thomas is with me here today, and Kristin earlier in the fall received the Meritorious Support Award from Epsilon Sigma Phi, which is the Extension Professionals Association in Georgia. Tina Ruhl, our Office of Administrative Assistant, received the Georgia Association of County Agricultural Agents Outstanding Administrative Assistant Award for the whole state. We were super excited about that. And not to be outdone, our 4H staff, Josie Davis, received the Excellence in Natural Resources and Environmental Education Award from the Georgia Association of 4H Professionals. And in addition to that, she and one of our volunteers, Shannon Childress, who coaches our BB team, won the award for excellence in shooting sports programming. So I'm always happy to report about the positive work that they do, but I'm even happier when they get recognized for all of their efforts to work with youth, improve our community, and serve. So what's happening in 2023, we're already underway. We've got a master gardener training that just started earlier this month. There's public gardening programming coming up with master gardeners. First one's tomorrow. Junior Master Gardeners is going to open for business in the spring, and our master garden plant sale, everybody mark your calendar, May 6th. I know everybody wants to know. 4H has project achievement, the public speaking contest coming up on February 4th for the county, and camp registration will start the week after that for all of our 4Hers. Shooting sports teams are underway, and we are conferring with kids who are interested in foods, club, and poultry judging to start later this month. Next month, we'll be partnering with Keep Paulding Beautiful to do an Arbor Day Tree giveaway, and we're currently registering for this year's Journeyman Farmer Training, which instead of Small Fruits and Vegetables, is on sheep and goats. And we'll have Master Naturalist Training again later this year in the fall. So those two series are back for the year. Anybody who's interested can catch up with us on Facebook, find out what's going on, see what's been happening, and learn helpful gardening tips sometimes. So we're grateful always for our partnerships with other departments to help us achieve programming and provide services in Paulding. We have great partners at Keep Paulding Beautiful, Community Development, the Water Department, Parks and Rec, and great support from Parks and Rec, and great support from building maintenance and finance and human resources. So I'm super grateful to all the folks who help us out during the year. It's a pleasure to be part of Team Paulding and to serve the citizens of Paulding County and bring the land grant mission to our citizens, making UGA's resources and research available right here in our county. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have for us.
Love that report, Mary Carol. How'd the BB team do this year?
BB team did pretty well. They're back in season to take on a new season this year, so I don't think they've had any... Actually, they had a shooting match on Saturday. It wasn't an official one, but they had one on Saturday. I think they did pretty well. I think it's going well. And archery's underway. They had a match on Saturday, too, an indoor, state indoor match. So.
You mentioned a lot of the fifth-grade schools. Who volunteers or who does the instruction teaching?
So that's staff members who go in the schools. We have three 4H program assistants and our 4H agent, Josie Davis. So there's four folks going into the 19 elementary schools. They also go into all of middle schools once a month. They don't meet by classroom in middle school, they just have one club meeting. And we have a senior club meeting at the office every month for high school students.
You're a busy lady, aren't you?
We try to, you know, it goes faster, the day is faster if there's work to do.
Thank you for what you do.
You're welcome. Thanks, y'all.
Our second report this morning is from Finance Director Tabitha Pollard. Give us a mid-year review we're all excited about, because it's all good, right, Tabitha?
That's right. It is all good. Kind of a hard act to follow, though, between master gardeners and sheep and goats. This is not near as entertaining, I'll tell you that. So I think before we get started, our mid-year, this is pretty much an annual process. It's almost like we finish the budget and we start staying, well, let's put that on mid-year, let's discuss that at mid-year. So here we are, it's mid-year, and we'll finish this up, and then in about a month, we'll start the budget process. So if something's not here, it's not left out, this is an active document, and we're continuously making adjustments as needed. But let's talk about a little bit about last year and how we ended the year, because I don't think we've done that for the public. And we did, everybody's interested in general fund, so I'm going to stick with that today to be short. And we added two fund balance, so that means our revenues exceeded our expenditures by about $12 million. Now, how did that happen? We also had about $10 million of obligations that were rolled from one period to the next. So they rolled from 2022 budget to 2023, meaning that we had made the obligation on last year's budget. The expense didn't completely get to a point of payment, and so those expenses were just rolled into this year's budget. And if you look at the back of the general fund, you'll see that the original budget was at $1.8 million use of fund balance, and then your revised budget's at 11.8 use of fund balance, and that would get you to... So you ended the year last year with about $2 million ahead of where you were originally. So all that to say, now let's get into this year and where we are and what's happened. The first half of the year is pretty... Some of your expenditures are one, I mean, some of your revenues come in one time. Your property taxes, there's really, you know, in July, August, September, you don't really have a lot of activity, and then all of a sudden, you have everything. So it's really December before we can get a good feel of what our revenues and some of our expenditures, but more often than more revenues, look like for the year. So property taxes this year came in at about 96.5 percent collection rate. That's average. I mean, that's normal. That's pretty much right on track with what we've been for the past several years. Motor vehicle Ivalorum tax, if you recall during the budget, we talked about increases, how that revenue was continuing to grow. We budgeted a little growth. We are getting there. We're at, right at 50%. So unless we see a lot of decline, you're going to be very close to that revenue. It's right on track at December 31st. Local option sales tax. I've got another slide, because that's interesting. It shows what's happening outside of here, what people are buying, what they're, what's going on. And we use that to roll back our millage rate. So that becomes a topic of interest if you can offset a property tax for a sales tax. That's usually very welcomed. That revenue is slowing, so we had a large growth last year. We still have growth. We still have, it's still improving, as you'll see in a minute, but that's, it's not growing quite as fast as it was in the past. We'll talk about that more in just a second. Insurance premium tax, that's a tax that's paid on your insurance premiums. It's sent to the insurance tax commissioner, then he sends it out to all of us based on population formula. And that number generally grows. This year, we had a, it is based on the last actual census data, so they don't use projected census. And so periodically, you'll have a significant growth. And this year, we had a pretty significant growth, so it was a little more than what we had anticipated. Intangible recording tax, so those are, that's a tax that's paid on loans for property mortgages such as, and those are declining. So we're not seeing quite the same amount of transactions. And your real estate transfer tax, those are declining. It doesn't look like we're going to, we're going to reach the budget amount for those. Those are a little bit, a little bit less. Okay, so for local option sales tax, the blue is 2023. You can see the growth, and the red would be 2022. So you can see the growth was significantly more. It's, the growth is still there. We've exceeded it, but it's not at the same rate as it was in 2022. To give you an idea of how it's, how it comes in month to month, in July of 2023, we received 2.1 million. July 2022, we received 1.9 million, which the growth between, that was a 12.73 growth. And in 2021, compared to 2022, was 18.11% growth. And then if you look down to December's, December is usually a big month. This one's a little bit attention-getting. It's not alarming necessarily, but it's attention-getting that your December growth was at 6.4, and that's still growth, but it's significantly less. So our expenditures. Overall, our expenditures are at about 51%, which is what you would expect in a, in a year at December. And what we've done, several of our, if you look through the update, we have several departments that are a little bit more than 50%, and then some that are a little bit less. So why would they be a little bit more? You have leave buyback, that's budgeted in lump sum. So those have to be divvied out. So they were expensed at the department level, and they were, but they were budgeted in one lump sum. Pay increases were budgeted in one lump sum for COLAs, and then they're expensed out. So that money has to be distributed appropriately to the departments. Judicial, that's on track. You have a few that are a little bit over. Drug court salaries, they appear to be over, but that's because of additional surveillance. Basically, you're moving money from other to salaries. It's on track. Board of Equalization, that season's already almost complete. The ARPA judicial grant, that's a grant that wasn't necessarily budgeted for a full year, because July, we were guaranteed through December, and then in December, we were guaranteed for another year. So public safety's on track, public works on track, health and welfare is on track, culture and recreation on track, housing and development is on track, with a few things, a few additional expenses that we've incurred. One for 24/7 software, and the airports had some grant projects. Mid-year adjustments. So we've talked about a couple of mid-year adjustments. Basically, we've done some job class, job reclassifications. We have a position or so and an on-call pay adjustment for some of our on-call pay. And I believe that summarizes, for the most part, what the mid-year adjustments look like at this time to get us through the rest of this year, and then we'll have our budget requests coming in the spring for next year. So unless you have any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. Do you have any insight into, I mean, is it just a general economic condition? Would you have any way of knowing if other counties were similarly affected for December as we were in the slow growth of SPOST?
Yes, I can look to see. I have not looked beyond Paulding to see what others have done, but yes, we have the ability to look at other counties to see if their distributions have declined. I'll do that and get back to you.
There's several courts on the handout you gave that are over the 50%. December 31st being the end of six months, right? So is there any reason? I'm seeing some 60% here. 57, 74.
Most of those are going to be grant-related, because you have a good many grants within your judicial system. So most of those are going to be grant-related, such as your, the... Let's see, let me see the ones that... Mental health is a grant.
So does that come in yet?
No, sir. But most of your courts are under 50%. Or most of what I'm looking at are under 50% outside of your special courts, like the drug court and the mental health court.
Thank you. No further questions. We just appreciate your report, mid-year review. Thanks much, Tabitha. We have no one who's signed up for public participation on agenda items. Under consent agenda, we have several items, and I've asked Commissioner Kaker to read these. I think her voice will be clearer than mine is.
Thanks, Chairman. On the consent agenda, we have the following. Consideration of the following consent agenda items. Adopt the job classification for a development coordinator for the Community Development Department. Number five is adopt the job classification for a junior network administrator for the Information Technology Department. Number six, alcohol license review board appointment with a term of January 24, 2023 through December 31, 2023. And they are Carol McLeod, BOC appointment, and Adam Bevers, BOC appointment. Number seven, appoint David Fitzpatrick to the Paulding County Board of Family and Children's Services with the term of January 24, 2023 through December 31, 2028. Number eight is recreation board appointments with the term of January 24, 2023 through December 31, 2027. Ben Paris would be the post-one appointment, and Jean Allen, post-two appointment. Number nine is approve amending the term dates for the Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission listed on the January 10, 2023 minutes, from a two-year term to a one-year term, ending December 31, 2023. Number 10, adopt resolution 23-02 for the transition from VALEC to ACCG Defined Contribution that was approved at the November 10, 2022 board meeting, Board of Commissioners meeting, I'm sorry. And that's it.
Thank you, Sandy. I appreciate that, and well done. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing no response on that, we'll leave them where they are and consider them this evening at 6 o'clock. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, item 11 is discuss action authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental consultant services agreement with Heath and Lineback for preliminary engineering design for the state Route 120 connector, Hiram Sudi Road, Davis Mill Road North and Davis Mill Road South intersection. This would be an improvement project in the amount of $71,848.21. Funding for this work will be allocated from SPOST, Special Local Option Sales Tax Funds located in post-one, and also in post-three. Director Jones is going to report.
The Board of Commissioners originally approved an on-call engineering services contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers at the December 17 to South and 17 Board of Commissioners meeting. As part of that project, a scope of work for preliminary engineering for a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of State Route 120 Connector, Hiram Sudi Road, Davis Mill Road North, and Davis Mill Road South was allocated in the amount of $129,115.76. As time has progressed during the design of this project, we've considered and applied for state funding, but ultimately reconsidered due to the time and expense that it would add to the preliminary engineering design of this project. This supplemental agreement will complete the preliminary engineering for this project and get it to construction let. Now, we're anticipating a 15-month timeframe roughly to complete all the preliminary engineering. And at that point, once the preliminary engineering is let, it can be let for construction.
Any questions? Number 12 is also, Mr. Jones, is discuss action to approve the project funding allotment increase in the amount of $85,000 for 2022 Asphalt Contract Four. Funding for this work will be allocated from SPOST funds located in post-four.
Asphalt Contract Four was approved by the Board of Commissioners at the April 12, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting at, in the amount of $2,290,854.86. The contract consisted of 11.38 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and resurfacing of asphalt on 64 streets in seven subdivisions. Due to overruns in the contract, particularly in the Edenwood subdivision, where we had a substantial amount of binder asphalt failure and shoving, we're asking for a allotment increase to cover the amount of work that was performed. This funding will be allocated from SPOST. The work on this contract is substantially complete at this time. So essentially, we looked at our calculations. Everything else being considered, all the other subdivisions were in line with our projections. However, Edenwood, due to the, like I said, the significant work, there was severe issues with the binder, tacking issues, et cetera. So it took more work than originally was estimated.
Any questions? Here we move on to 13, which is, thank you, George. Discuss action to reappoint Steve Kaker and Amy Shide to the Keep Paulding Beautiful Board with a term of January 24, 2023 through December 31, 2023, as the post-two nominations. So there's no report on that, of course. We vote this evening. That person related to Steve Kaker on the board will not be voting. That's the... That's the conclusion of regular business. Public participation on non-agenda items, no one has signed up for that. Would any of the commissioners like to kind of help close out the meeting with any special announcements or thoughts? I've got one, and I hope Mayor Kelly is going to watch this. They have a lot of good things on at the theater, the Dallas Theater, that's been rebuilt, re... What do you call it where you... what do you call it, where you just redecorate it and everything? It's a fun place to go. I went in there with my wife Saturday night to the Oldies Music Concert. Very great entertainment and a packed house. Guess what? More, most of them were pretty old, Ray. I guess they're the only ones that appreciate the 70s and 80s, except I thought Baker Street would be there. I'd also like to say a special thanks to Chief Pelfrey and, and Brandon for how y'all lead these men and women in the fire department. I know it's your leadership that really makes it happen. So I just, great things to celebrate this morning. So thank you.
Chief Pelfrey. Did I not see a young man that just graduated? When we went to the park for a graduation party? I thought so. I thought I recognized him.
Turner Edwards, who was actually with the Parks and Rec and switched over, stole it from Mike. He has become a very good firefighter. Mike was taking credit for it.
Well, he had to learn pretty quick then, didn't he?
He has some good leadership out there with him, yeah.
Anybody else? 10:50. We do have executive session for the purpose of real estate. And we will adjourn from the conference room after we have that executive session rather than coming back in here. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. To executive session. For real estate.
Motion to adjourn for executive session for real estate.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, by Mr. Dunn. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned for executive session.